Please call the roll.
Bowman.
Here.
Carson.
Here.
Ferris.
Here.
Adair.
You.
Swallow.
Here.
Dr. Berg.
Here.
Lard.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here. Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approve that city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda and then be considered separately. Consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of minutes of regular meeting July 21st through 2025. Item B, approval of minutes of the special meetings July 28th through 2025. Item C, approval of claims in the amount of $296,893.68 in payroll expenses of $264,508.76. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hoffman and a second by Dr. Lard to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Lard.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Dr. Berg.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Ferris.
Yes.
Adair.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. There was no planning commission meeting. Mr. Bowman, do you have a hospital authority meeting report?
It was a pretty routine meeting, so there was nothing to work to avoid.
Council, any questions for Mr. Bowman? Mrs. Swallow, do you have a library report report?
Yes, I do. The maker selections section supplies from their grant are available to use at the library now. They are removing outdated nonfiction books. The summer reading program served 245 kids and adults. We discussed the annual report. They have purchased six new laptops from a donation given by the Presbyterian Church. And they will host the state library board meeting in September. And if you didn't read the library annual report, you can look over it because it's pretty impressive with what our library has done for our community.
Counsel, any questions for Mrs. Swallow? Second, Gail. There was not an arena authority meeting. Mrs. Beer, can you give us a tourism commission report?
Which I actually reported on tourism since it happened before council, so we actually meet Wednesday. We're back to where it falls after, so August meeting, I'll report next month.
All right. There was no board of adjustments meeting. Alba Regional Airport Commission, Mr. Carson's.
A routine, very short meeting and all the projects at the airport are going well and seem to be on track. And the airport is back open and everything, the airport seems to be going good.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Carson's? Mrs. Swallow, do you have a parks and recreation meeting?
Yes, I do. The swimming pool is now only open on weekends. And we had 6,124 passes for kids this summer, which is pretty impressive.
224 now.
That's pretty impressive. Construction, the construction company on the pool will help them shut it down for the winter. And if you missed, get the one that was with Is It a Great State or What on Friday? And so you can go back and watch that maybe. They have a $100,000 grant to do lighting and it has to be used by September the 30th, so they have decided to do one of the softball fields with the most inoperable lights. And so that's going to be discussed later. Let's see, and it'll be through Masco, which has a $142,000 bid with a 24-year warranty and a $5,000 utility rebate for upgrading to LED lights. And that's about it.
Counsel, any questions for Mrs. Swallow?
Yes, on the closing out of the pool, will that company help every year? This is first year.
I think just this first.
Yeah, I think, once it teaches her to do it, okay. They'll take videos of it and it happens, so she'll have that library do that and look at it every year.
Okay.
Make sure it's there, right?
And like a lot of things, if a year goes by and she needs it, I mean, it can be something we can bring out on a contract basis. Yeah. All right, there was no cemetery meeting. Dr. Lard, can you give us a finance committee report?
Nothing major to report. Sales tax and water usage is up. Water usage is up 5 million gallons, so that's more money coming to the city. Outside of that, Mrs. Beer said that everything looks on track, a new fiscal year and revenue is actually up a little bit over what was expected.
No questions for Dr. Lard? With mayor's report, Gail, I don't know if the board, if it was reported to the board, but the swimming pool is up for innovation support with their own municipal league, so September 11th will be in the awards banquet. We'll see if we win that, but that's, we're pretty good standing with that, with our projects, so that's great. Remind everybody on the council that the OML conference will be September 9th through the 11th. So those of you that are going, if you've never been before, a lot of information, a lot of good networking. And their vendor floor is tremendous. There's anything and everything that could ever be done in a municipality, they've got a vendor or six there doing, you know, doing that stuff. If you're going, great. If you're wanting to go, I don't know if it's too late or not.
It might have times, it might have a hard time finding a room after close, but we got to August 31st again, it would be very special as far as the cost for the whole thing.
So it's worthwhile trip. Any questions for me? The other thing I wanted to add, and I had, we didn't get it attached to the agenda, did we? So I emailed, we'll get you a copy and we'll get something posted, but we emailed out proclamation regarding some objectives that I'd like for us to work on over the next couple of years. The first one of those that was listed was with regard to transitioning from a statutory altermanic form of municipal government to what's called a charter city. Charter city basically means that we, we're right now in statutory altermanic. State says this is what your government will do and these are the rules that you will follow. The charter city allows us to basically make our own local constitution, which would override state statute and, but it would still come under the state constitution. So we would basically, the process involves, the project, a year and a half, two years to go through the process, but involves a tremendous number of public hearings to get feedback from the community. It would essentially then go into the development process where we take the feedback that we receive and we turn that into our charter. And then the charter would ultimately be voted on by the people of Alba to accept the charter as this is what's going to govern our community moving forward. I think the statutory altermanic form of government has served us pretty well for, you know, however long we've been in the city, but we are starting to see some limitations with a town our size. And so I am anxious to get the ball rolling, getting the feedback from the public and then seeing where we can go with this, but I think it will allow us to set up the city of Alba for the next 100 years, if you will, to try and make sure and put us in a position to govern the way our people want us to govern and in the ways that are most effective where we might be having some limitations now. A second priority was, and we heard presentation last month from, I can't remember her name, but anyway, we heard presentation last month on our zoning and Dakota. Our zoning and master plan, that was a little bit of sticker shock, but nonetheless, those are tasks that as a council, we're the only ones that'll, you know, be able to tackle those. We don't have another entity of the city that goes through and approves those zoning ordinances. So going through the process, again, public hearings and citizen input and planning and development, knock those 21, you know, zones down to something more manageable and something that we can enforce on a regular basis. Not only that, also taking into consideration our municipal boundaries and where those need to be drawn and then what implications that's going to have on our infrastructure moving forward. So, and then the third priority I had was simply just coming up with ways to have a focused concerted effort on leadership development and developing people in our community to be prepared to serve on our boards and commissions and maybe ultimately in one of these seats. And so I would like to, if there's no objection, and this isn't a vote, but I would like to take that proclamation and try to fashion it in the form of a resolution that would come before the council for consideration and approval. And with that approval, we would officially start the processes on some of these things and move that forward. But really, it's something that we're, it's not on the agenda as a discussion item tonight, so we can't really discuss it, but it is something that we, that I think is important as we, as we move forward as a city. Talked to a lot of leaders out there across the state and our challenges aren't that much different than their challenges, but there's a lot of variability in how they're able to tackle those challenges depending on how their governing documents are set up, depending on how their zones are set up and all of those different things. And so that's something that hopefully we'll get that in front of you guys next month for consideration as a resolution and we can begin moving that forward. If... Got a little chipmunk over here in Steve's computer. But that's all I've got on that right now. If there's anything about any of that, reach out to Steve or myself individually and we can use that to craft a resolution. It's going to be pretty similar to what was put forth in the proclamation, like I said. Apologize, that proclamation wasn't here tonight, but it will, it will be published. It's not, not anything we'll try and keep secret. We need to get it out in front of everybody so we can start having conversations. Any questions for me? We are, it's Thursday afternoon.
Thursday morning.
Thursday morning. Steve and some of the staff members and I are going to get together. There is annually the summer mayor's conference that rotates around the state, usually not in any of the big metropolitan areas. The request for proposals timeline has started with the deadline of December 19th and interested in submitting a proposal, come next June, we should have the Salt Fork Event Center open. We've got, this year we opened the pool. I expect that there'll be some other, you know, new and good things happening in Alba that we'll be able to showcase and it'll be, I think, good to get some, some of the other leaders from across the state up here to Alba to kind of look and see what we're doing and say, hey, we've been through that, this is what we did, or we love how you did that and, you know, maybe give us some other ideas for how we can be a great city. So stay tuned. We'll hopefully start early enough that we can get some good plans in place and put together a good proposal for the league to consider. Any other questions? Business manager report.
Not a whole lot, other than what's in my report that's attached. Just a quick update on Forest Street. I know that's been a while. They're going to be pouring concrete tomorrow to fix the curb regarding badly placed. Not very much, certainly not like Locust Street, but just a little bit. Enough that we can pour it up and brand ourselves. And then there'll be black coffee next week, Thursday and Friday, weather permitting. If it rains, it's going to kill us again, so. But that's kind of the plan over there, get that thing done, wrapped up. There's a lot more damage underneath that concrete than we ever thought possible, so. Like the mayor mentioned, OML, 9th through 12th, you golf and it's 8th through 12th. I've got them reserved, so. And then last, another reminder about the NOI, the New Officials Institute, October 16th in Woodbridge. I've got Mr. Ferris down, he's going. Any other municipal members you ever go?
I have to drive this Thursday.
Thursday. Yeah. So he'll put you down or not? Or wait?
Yeah, that's why.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman, you're up there.
Woodbridge?
Yeah, Woodbridge. Yeah, it's the closest one we're going to have is Woodbridge, so.
Any questions for Mr. Ford? Next item, number seven, the March Inquiries by Citizens. Public comment is, if you're able to make public comment at this time, we ask that everybody keep their comments to two minutes or less. We will let you know when we get that two minute mark. And if you're able, please stand and identify yourself.
My name is Bridget Corrag. I'm the EMS director. I know that the main concern with EMS right now is financial stability. I'd like to give you a quick update on where we are and what steps we've taken to improve both revenue and operations. First, staffing and overtime. Since August 2nd, we have had a paramedic on duty six to seven days a week with two on calls covering 24/7. And we plan to continue this moving forward. We're working hard to make sure overtime is used only for transfers, county backup runs with some minimal training hours. Those changes will help bring payroll costs down. Second, billing and revenue. I'd like us to reconsider our billing company. EMS MC already handles billing for Miller EMS and Guthrie Fire EMS, and they've been successful. I believe switching to them will improve our collections and reduce reimbursement time. In addition, I would like to attend EMS billing, EMS billing course. This will give me the tools to better understand the process, ensure collecting everything we should, and reduce denials. I've also been working with our current billing company to preview the denials we've had this year and to find ways to correct those and improve our revenue moving forward. Third, progress on assigned tasks. At the beginning of the year, we were given several objectives. I'm proud to say we've consistently completed those tasks and continue to work on them regularly. Finally, paramedic training and workforce development. We have now approved, approval to conduct paramedic skills training at Northwest Tech for school of EMS paramedic class, and we're in the process of setting that up. At least two of our members will be in that class and another will attend through Pan Beach at the same location. When those classes are completed, we will have six paramedics total, three of them based right here in Alba. In conclusion, we're controlling overtime, we're improving billing and collections, we're investing in training, more paramedics. Those efforts will strengthen our finances and most importantly, improve the quality of care we provide for this community. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Blake Jordan. I've spoken with many of you on outsourcing EMS, so you know where I stand. We need to keep EMS local. One thing I do want to clear up is I've heard some of you say that as the city council, you can't talk about EMS outsourcing because you signed NDAs, but that's not how it works. NDAs might cover private info about individual employees like performance reviews, but they don't stop anyone from discussing the department as a whole or whether we should outsource EMS. This is according to the Open Meeting Act. Outsourcing EMS is a public issue. It affects everyone in our town, our safety, our services and our tax dollars. And under Oklahoma Open Meeting laws, that kind of decision is supposed to be talked about in public, not behind closed doors. If you're one that believes that NDAs stop you from talking about outsourcing, I would ask that you take a closer look at those documents and decide if that is actually true. Everyone just wants transparency. We want to know why this is on the agenda again, and I would kindly ask that you follow through with the transparency that some of you campaigned on. We want open conversations about decisions that impact our community, but that has to start with you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Davidson, and for the past year, I've lived with constant uncertainty about whether I still have a place within the city of Alba. Let me be clear, I'm not worried about finding a job elsewhere, I'm confident in my abilities, and I believe I could be hired by a new company if it comes to that, but that's not the point. I was born and raised here. I'm proud to serve as citizens of Alba, people I've known my entire life. What is getting grounded is the shared goals within my department. My safety was a priority. My dedication is met with fair pay. I've made real sacrifices to do this job, time away from my family, many sleepless nights and hits to my mental health, just to name a few, but I signed up for that and for a long time, I felt valued for that commitment. Of course, there were tough months. I watched crew members and close friends come and go. I've watched false information spread while the truth, the actual facts have been dismissed. I've seen leaders take to social media and newspapers to criticize us, but I've also seen others stand up to our defense. This community has endured significant challenges, but the impact extends beyond Alba. We have had the privilege of supporting our neighboring communities in their times of need. Our crews have celebrated with you, we've grieved with you, and sometimes we've just sat with you in silence. We are deeply concerned about the continued instability surrounding our employment with the city of Alba. We've come to these meetings, we've worked hard, really hard to make the improvements that you've requested, and it's working. We've turned things around and I truly believe that we're on the right path. But if this still isn't good enough, if you believe that there's a better way forward, I can respect that. You have to make the decisions you believe are best for the city. What I was trying to ask for tonight before it got removed off of the agenda was that we need to stop tabling this, we need to stop pushing it off, stop wasting our time, we need to vote and we need it like now. We need to know what, where we stand within the city of Alba.
Hello. My name is Alyssa Taylor, and I'm the assistant director with Alba EMS. I'm just going to say this is longer than two minutes, so if somebody needs to come up and finish reading this, they can. I'm just warning you, cut me off.
It's not my fault.
Just, just in case. I appreciate you guys giving me the chance to talk this evening about something that matters to each of us, our local EMS service. And I just want to highlight the positive steps we've been taking to keep this service strong, reliable and focused and focused on the needs of this community. When emergencies happen, everybody knows that second's matter. We know the roads, we know the landmarks, we know the people, we know the hospital. And this familiarity allows us to provide faster, more compassionate and more effective care when it's needed most. Over the past year, we've been working hard to build on that foundation and ensure that our service continues to grow. First, we've worked on staffing and coverage. We've hired additional personnel, brought on an assistant director and to strengthen our leadership team, which not only strengthens our response capabilities, but also creates jobs right here in our community. We've also put in place, like Bridget said, a two-on-call system when applicable. And what this means is simple but critical. We can handle hospital transfers, but still ensure that we have nine-in-one coverage for this area. And because of this change and our focus on hiring, we've only had two denied transfers in the last two months while still keeping coverage for the town of Alba. And on top of that, we have been providing intercepts for our surrounding communities when they need a higher level of care. Second, partnerships and training. We've worked hard to strengthen relationships with our public safety partners. We've reinstated our public safety meetings with the fire department and the police department to stay coordinated. And for a period of time, we held monthly meetings with sheer hospital, which allowed us to align on patient care and improve communication. Unfortunately, those meetings were canceled by the hospital without any explanation. While that was disappointing, we've continued to train with them where if possible and keep the lines of communication open because ultimately, our goal is the same, better patient outcomes for this community. We've also expanded training opportunities like Bridget brought out. We've partnered with the schools, the police department, fire department, Survival Flight Air, Woods County on active shooter drills with the school. We also help certify every single Alba public school's employee in CPR. And that's a major step forward in making our school safer for our kids. Every month, our crews have been participating in in-service training focused not only on medical skills, but also on customer service because when Alba EMS shows up, it's not just about treating the community medically, but it's about caring for people in some of the hardest moments of their lives. Third, advanced education. We're committed to education at every level. Our supervisors recently attended a leadership training to make sure we're guiding our teams with strong values, clear direction and continued focus on professionalism. Like Bridget said, we are getting ready to send three people to paramedic school. And we've also sent employees to field training officer class, which means we'll be able to rate EMS providers in Alba more effectively and faster. We are currently at the tech center with Survival Flight and PHTLS, which is pre-hospital trauma life support class, which is going to sharpen our trauma skills. And one of the most exciting developments is that we're bringing that paramedic course here to Alba through the school of EMS at the tech center. That's not only going to allow our people, but also providers from surrounding communities to get advanced training in a shorter amount of time without leaving Northwest Oklahoma. All of these steps, hiring, training, education, partnerships, add up to one thing, a better service for our community. Faster response times, stronger skills and trusted local faces who are committed to being there when you need the most. When we keep EMS local, we're not just keeping an ambulance here, we're keeping a promise, a promise to be there when you call, a promise to grow with the needs of this community and a promise to put education, training and compassion at the center of everything that we are doing. We have been striving to provide a professional service that grows with this community and puts the people first. And I'm proud to say that we are doing that. Thank you.
Can I speak for?
You may.
I didn't plan on speaking this evening. My name is Brian Ferris. I moved here about two and a half years ago. I originally grew up in LA and I know how important the paramedic program is by, I was, I grew up in LA when the paramedic program was began in 1974. If, like they stated, deaths were very common in LA. I mean, usually most rescue units got to a scene, basically they were rolling ambulances. By the time they got them to the hospital, they were dead. When the paramedic program came in and EMTs became, came after that, the survival rate jumped enormously. The thing I like, I don't know the details on what's going on as far as the EMS, whether you're trying to outsource it like you did the trash or if you're trying to keep it here, but they, they made great points. You had, your community is the most important. Those people know, everybody in the community, a lot of them know what the people have that they need to be treated before you even get a hold of the hospital. So my personal opinion, being from LA, knowing the paramedic program and the greatness that, that's where it started. That's where EMTs began, also after the paramedic program. It's the responsible for everything across the world and the nation. It's very important to keep it localized with the city and not outsourced because they could be there in a matter of minutes to where there could be an ambulance or paramedics, you know, 10, 10 miles away, it takes them 20 minutes. And in hard cases or anything, it's, it's a matter of minutes. So I'm, if that's the case... important to keep it localized with the city and not outsourced, because they can be there in a matter of minutes to where there could be an ambulance or paramedics, you know, 10 miles away. It takes them 20 minutes. And in hard cases or anything, it's a matter of minutes. So, I'm, if that's the case, I would rather see the city keep the EMS program localized, and that's just basically it.
Does anybody have anything that would be different than what's currently been shared? Any other topics? Want to change course? We'll move 14 and 15 up to now. 14 is discussion concerning city business manager's recommendation regarding privatization of EMS service for the city of Alba. Before Steve or council decides to table this, or whatever, I do want to say that privatization is a, has been brought up as a means to ensure... We're a misconception. We want all of you guys, regardless of what happens moving forward. We want all of you guys, regardless of what happens moving forward, for all the reasons you've stated. The contract with Survival Flight has not been discussed in the executive session. We have discussed performance of the individuals in the department. Contract for Survival Flight is on the agenda tonight. I recommend we table it because we don't have the contract, we haven't gone through legal, but I'll, whatever the council wants to, if they want to take the vote, we'll take the vote.
So, are we on item 14 or 15?
We're on 14 right now. We'll move to 15. There's enough room for discussion on 14.
I'll make a motion to decline the contract with Survival Flight EMS.
We're down to 14, guys? 15, discussion in action to approve contract for Survival Flight for ground EMS services and authorize the mayor and business manager to sign all necessary documents.
I will make a motion to decline the contract with Survival Flight ground EMS services.
A motion from Mr. Parsons, a second from Mr. Kreckenberg to not approve the contract with Survival Flight stated 911-15. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Kreckenberg?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Adir?
Yes.
Keep working. We appreciate what you've been doing.
Thank you.
Keep working.
Thank you, guys.
All right. We will return to item number eight. This is the presentation on the FY 2024 audit results from HSPG and Associates.
Thank you, guys.
Andy, can you hear us?
Hey, I'm here.
Okay. You're on.
Well, good evening, everybody. Excuse me. My name is Andy Cromer, CPA with HSPG and Associates, and we've just completed the city's audit for fiscal year 2024. So, this is back for the year ended June 30th of 2024. So, you all should have three documents in your package. The big one is the actual financial statements, and then there's two smaller documents that we'll go there just real briefly. Again, the, well, before I start, there's two CPA firms involved. The other firm is Crawford and Associates, so you may have seen their name, or seen them, or seen their invoices, but they helped the city get ready for audit. They prepared schedules that we need. They actually write the financial report that we're discussing, and maybe just provide help throughout the year as needed to the city, but just that we are two separate firms. So, different ownership, different firms, different contracts. It's just so you know who's who. As far as the financial statement you all have, usually there's a couple of things that I look to when I'm looking to present one of these to the city council. How is the general fund doing? And how is the utility, operations for the utility authority doing? So, the general fund, one benchmark that, or the typical benchmark that I look to is just to see how are your reserves? You might call them reserves, rainy day funds, special reserves, whatever you might want to call it. How is that doing? And so typically, I will compare that to your annual revenue. So, think of, hey, if I lost my job, how long could I last on what I have saved? And so, it's a similar thing. Here, if the city lost all income, then it's general fund. How long could that general fund last before it runs out? And really, I think the good rule of thumb is somewhere between one to three months of revenue, of annual revenue. So, I kind of got for you all. In 2024, you all established really two savings plans, I guess is the best way to say it. One is you established the capital reserve, and then you also started funding the stabilization reserve. So, two separate things, somewhat similar in nature, but they are both separate. Collectively, the city has set aside about $400,000 collectively for both of those. The general fund itself has no reserves, really. It's all been set aside into these other two categories, if you will. But $400,000 is about one month of your annual revenue. So, you're there within the benchmark, you're on the low end, but you're still there. So, you know, not doing great, but certainly doing okay. On the utility authority, the picture's a little bit brighter. Your operating income increased from about, almost a little under $2 million to a little over $2.5 million, and you all raised by four to five percent, so we can see that coming through. And you're able to provide, transfer back to the general fund to support the general fund operations. So, it's doing okay. In addition to that, the utility authority also received a $1 million forgivable loan from the water board, and that's in addition to the income number I just mentioned. So, that's above and beyond even the $2.5 million that it earned on itself. So, doing, that's doing well. Other things that are in this report, there's two reports at the back. One is required by the state of Oklahoma. It is, we gotta have that every year. The second report is only required when you have over $750,000 of federal awards. And so, that was the case in 2024. And so, if we have any issues or findings, they will go into one of those two reports. So, the first report that the state requires, it covers the city as a whole, and it's broken down into two sections. The first is internal control, and the second is compliance. And so, if we had any issues with either one of those, they would be in here. We did have a comment on internal control, and I've been over this with Steve and Sadie both, and really, it's just a generic comment for small organizations. It doesn't matter if you're a government, a non-for-profit, or a for-profit, but we like to see service segregation, their duties segregated amongst employees, and due to you all, small staff size, you can't always do that. And so, really, this comment is just be aware of that, do what you can. And it may be, in some cases, you can segregate duties where everything's perfect until someone quits, and then you have to reshuffle, or you're down a person. It may be when someone's gone on vacation. It may even be when someone goes to lunch. You're not, and someone's got a cover, you may not always be able to do these. So, just be aware of these limitations, and provide oversight, and be aware of it, and do what you can, really, is the comment. So, that's it for the first report. The second report deals only with your federal programs. And so, since we have to do some extra work over those programs, we test those for compliance. And really, the program we tested, you have about $900,000 from the water board of ARPA money. And if you remember, ARPA was one of the COVID monies, COVID pasta money that the federal government was handing out, oh, probably back in 2021, maybe. And so, the water board distributed that to the city, but that federal, those federal strings, they attached, and so it's still considered federal money, even though it came from the water board. So, we tested that for compliance, and we have no findings over that. So, good job there. So, really, that's it, Stephen, for this big report. I want to pause before I go over these other two, which will be very brief. But does anybody have any questions, your comments, or thoughts, before I move on from this big financial report?
Question, Steve? Go on, don't wait, Sadie. Keep driving.
Okay. All right. So, this big report is what gets issued. It will go to the state auditor's office, among other parties, whoever needs your audit report, and those two separate reports get included in this big report. We issue a separate one-page report that has a couple of comments that we don't feel rise to the level of needing to be distributed to other parties. This is really just for you all. This is, hey, city, city council, management, this is something you guys need to be aware of and consider, and what can we do in the future, but this doesn't go to anybody but you all. And so, this is the one-page document, if you're trying to find it. But we have two comments in here. The first one is really to, since you all, it's a bit of a, I guess, of a coin flip, whether or not you all are going to annually need this separate compliance, if you spend over $750,000. And I believe in another year, too, it's actually going to go to over $1 million. So, if you don't ever meet that threshold, then this comment is moot, you don't need this. But these federal programs, the first thing it says is, does the recipient have written policies and procedures to ensure compliance with its federal rights? And so, we asked the city, and they go, well, we kind of have some, but they're outdated, they don't really cover everything. We get answers back like that. So, you know, the, I guess the point here is, if you are going to continue to receive these federal funds, then you really need to update your policies, and in some cases, you probably just need to draft some extra ones that you don't even have at all. And I want to make the point that it doesn't just cover purchasing, it requires policies over anything that you all have to do to be in compliance with the award. So, often, these federal awards will require you to do prepare a court report, an annual report, some kind of report. Well, do you have policies and procedures to ensure that you meet those requirements? So, yes, purchasing is the biggest one, I get that, but there are other policies that you need to consider as well. And then the second comment is bank collateral. So, the whole point of this is you all have cash at a bank, and it's FDIC insured. And if your cash is in excess of that FDIC insurance, which yours is, then state law requires you to require the bank to provide collateral for those deposits. And so, basically, that means if the bank goes out of business, you're not standing in line trying to get pennies on your dollar. You're simply, the bank would have flushed the treasury bill or whatever. You get that treasury bill, and you get your money back. So, that was done, you had enough, but the state statutes also say, not only does the bank have to do that, they have to use certain things to secure your deposits. They can't just use anything. And so, for your purpose, it's really limited to treasury notes, you know, US treasury notes, or obligations of the state of Oklahoma, or things out of the state of Oklahoma. So, if the state issues debt, the bank can use that. If the Alba school district wanted to issue debt, the bank can use that. Any school district, any city or town within the state of Oklahoma would qualify. But you can't use a city or a school district from another state. And that's, we see, we see that with one of your banks, they're using school districts from Texas. And so, there's simply a compliance binding. The state really says, hey, you can't do that. And so, again, we've talked, or I've talked with Stephen and Sadie, and they understand this, and we're going to get with the bank and try to figure this out. Part of it is just how quickly can a bank change it, if they even agree with it. And then if they do, how quickly can they reward those type of things? So, anyway, those are the two comments that we made in addition to that main segregation duties issue. Any comments, questions on that? And I got one document left. It's the shortest one, and then we'll be done. But any comments on that, questions?
Andy, for the pledge on the, over the FDIC, letter of credit from the lending institution or the banking institution, is that satisfied compliance?
Say that, now, what do you mean? Say that again?
A letter of credit from the bank?
Oh, yes, yes. That would work. That would work. Typically, they're from a part of the federal reserve system that I don't fully understand, honestly, but yes, that would work. Okay, so the final document is, we just call it a required communication letter. This is something that the auditing profession requires that we give the governing body, and there's six or seven bullet points there, and we have to give those six or seven bullet points, whether there's anything there to say or not. And so, those bullet points are there, but there's really nothing of substance out of those bullet points beyond just the generic template, I guess, if you will. So, I just know it's there. If you have a few minutes, so nothing to do, you can read it, just to see what kind of bullet points somebody has come up with, but there's nothing under the bullet points that I need to go over with you. So, I think that's it in a nutshell, a very quick run-through. So, just, we certainly enjoyed working with you guys, and Steve, and Sadie, so thank you for that. And that's my report.
Any questions? Andy? Well, Andy, we appreciate you hanging out with us this evening, waiting on us to be ready for you, and we really appreciate your work doing the audit and working with our staff. We've got on the agenda here in a little bit to sign another engagement letter with you, so.
Thank you.
So, everybody knows, we do have the finding on the insured funds, our CDs. It is taken care of. Our new bank has been taken care of with the letters of credit.
Very good. Easy enough.
Thanks, Andy. Appreciate it.
Okay, well, thank you all.
Item nine, action to accept the results of FY 2024 audit. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the results of the FY 2024 audit. I'll make a motion to accept the results of the FY 2024 audit.
Motion from Mr. Bowman, second from Mr. Hoffman, to accept the results of the FY 24 audit. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adir?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Kreckenberg?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yep.
Item 10, discussion in action to authorize city business manager and/or the mayor to sign the engagement letter with HSPG and Associates to allow them to conduct the city's FY 2024, 2025 annual audit. So, the year we've just completed, we're ready to audit.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to authorize the city business manager and/or the mayor to sign the engagement letter with HSPG and Associates to allow them to conduct the city's FY 2024-2025 annual audit.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Dr. Lahr, to authorize the city business manager or the mayor to sign the engagement letter with HSPG and Associates for the FY 2024-25 annual audit. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Kreckenberg?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Adir?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Item 11, presentation from Blue Peak Fiber Broad.
Mayor, Council, how are you? I'm excited to be here this evening with some coworkers and my, and this, right here, about fiber in Alba. So, Randy Butler works on our team. He's a director of government affairs out of Weatherford, was president of Southwestern, been there for a couple of years.
I have my Ranger boots on.
Spent time in the house, is a really quality guy, and then Missy Kemp, Oklahoma City area Putnam City grad, Oklahoma State grad as well. And I'm, Desi Stoops, like I said, I grew up and was born and raised in Perry. Spent some time here back in the mid-'80s when I was still in high school. It's been probably about that time since I've been back up here, so I appreciate you guys' time. So, Blue Peak, we are a fiber provider. We have built throughout the state of We have built throughout the state of Oklahoma, North Dakota, South Dakota, Wyoming. The four towns in Wyoming. There's one, there's one left on the last Rock Springs, but it's pretty rocky, as you can imagine, and pretty expensive to build. And so, you know, when we started, if we can go to the next, do I have a clicker? Okay, someone's got it. Blue Peak was purchased back in 2020, GI Partners. It's a private equity firm out of New York City. They purchased the assets up in South Dakota, Sioux Falls, Rapid City area. We had some legacy cable television markets up there. And private equity fund came in, said, hey, great business, great response, great subscribers, go grow the thing. And so I came on more than 2021, Randy came on shortly after, Missy came on shortly after that. In that first year of expansion, we were building primarily North Dakota, South Dakota, Wyoming, and then all of a sudden, the ground froze in there. And we had a lot of crews sitting around up there idle hands. So we, I raised my hand and said, hey, I know we probably built a year around, or at least most of the year, down in Oklahoma. So Perry, my hometown, was one of the first that we built, as well as Blackwell, Tonkawal, Stillwater, and Enid. That's kind of the first five, four or five markets that we built in the state. Great reception, easy to work with. We've, you know, worked a lot with PSO, GNE, and the municipal power owners, Tonkawal and Perry and Blackwell, their own municipal power. And we said, hey, this is, you can build about year-round here, and, you know, Oklahoma's business favorable, so let's continue. So, next slide. Since that time, we've built, like I said, the four markets in Wyoming, Cheyenne, Casper, Sheridan, and Laramie. In the state of Oklahoma, not only is it Blackwell, Tonkawal, Enid, and Perry, and Stillwater, we also built down Lawton and Altus, Weatherford, Clinton, Bartlesville, and in the middle, we're building Shawnee, Muskogee, Overmogee. And this continuing on, we're actually building and constructing Midwest City, as well as Dennis in Texas, a little bit south of the Red River. But we don't tell a lot of people that, I'm just kidding. We've got some folks down there that we, we work quite a bit with. So, expansion. You know, we were looking and thinking, okay, where else in the state of Oklahoma? You know, we were proximity technicians, operating expense, we have a lot of crew in Enid. We said, goodness, Alva's right there. We looked, community, you know, 2,800, 2,900 rooftops, similar size to Perry and Blackwell, and we realized that there wasn't as much fiber, or any fiber, in Alva. And so we were excited to reach out to the mayor and some other folks within the council, and had a number of discussions about possibility, and that's why I'm here this evening to see if I can get your vote to approve a franchise. Next one, please. So when you talk about fiber, main thing we look for, or main questions that we get asked is why? Why Alva? One of our big tenants within the company is, it doesn't matter if you're in Alva, you, your technology should be just like you live in New York, or LA, or Chicago, or wherever. Fiber is a piece of glass in front of each rooftop. Nothing's faster than the speed of light. You put the boxes on the end. Fiber has true symmetrical service. You go home tonight and do a speed test if you're on a DSL, if you're on a coax modem. You're going to get an upload speed at one rate and a download speed at a different rate. With fiber, they're symmetrical. So our minimum speed is one gig, 55 bucks, 65 bucks a month, depending on if you choose auto pay or not. Full one-gig upload-download speed. Funny story, mom was customer number one in the state of Oklahoma. When I was back at her house Thanksgiving, I used to live over in Tulsa before I moved to Stillwater. I was there for Thanksgiving, having coffee one morning, five o'clock in the morning, and she just said, hey, what do you, what do you have, mom? She had Optimum, she was paying, you know, 350 bucks or something for a 300-bank circuit. Five in the morning, her download speed was eight, and her upload speed was two kilobit, not even that. So she was like, well, you know, so what is this going to mean whenever fiber's in Perry? I said, well, our minimum speed's 1,000 down and 1,000 up, so it's not even comparable. And so, you know, I think that's one of the things when we get asked a lot, how does this help communities? You know, Stillwater has a large data center going in. I don't know if that was due to us building that, but I don't believe that was, could be possible without fiber throughout the community. Randy and I, and Missy both, we, all three of us spent a lot of time with the Alva, or Altus Economic Development, on their industrial parks, helping them attract new businesses within their industrial parks, the same over in Blackwell and in Tonkawal as well, and in Perry. So we spent a lot of time, I think, in a nutshell, fiber will future-proof Alva from a technology perspective. You always have improvements on the devices on the ends, new routers, new speeds, and things like that. But once you have a piece of glass in front of your house, it's future-proof. Think about the coax that's in your house today, it was probably put in when your house was built, seventies, eighties, nineties, before any of this. That's the technology that a lot of people are still using, coax modems, et cetera. So we're excited about this. Next one? Okay, we talked about the one-gig minimum service, residential's one, two, and five gig. There's a gentleman in Perry who actually moved back home. I think there was a lady here that said she was, you know, born and raised here and came back. But he actually worked for a graphic design company in Kansas City. And before we went into, and built Perry, he would start an upload, you know, sending back to Kansas City on a Friday, and it wouldn't complete until Sunday. He's got a five-gig circuit at his house, 30 seconds. Shipping big architectural designs, things like that, you know, back and forth. So the upload speed is really what helps that. You know, Randy, being at the university in there when COVID hit, one of the things you always heard about was remote distance learning, you know, telehealth, things like that. This is a game changer for most kids. Next one, please? I mentioned, 40-year asset, right? Coax fiber or coax DSL, been around, you know, one of your houses were about. Once we're here, we're going to be in the community. That's just kind of a given. We won't waste $6 million that we would spend here in Alva and upset the citizens or upset the city council, the administration. Makes no sense for us to spend that type of money and then just say, I don't know, you know? So we want to play an active part in the community, we'll be a part of the chamber, we'll be a part of economic development committees, we'll do everything you need us to do to assist and ensure that the residents and your constituents understand the benefit, understand how they use it, how they can improve their day-to-day activities with this technology. Next one? This is roughly our phase one approach to Alva. 2,900 rooftops, 87% of them single-family units. Hopefully that matches up. We've got all of this, our data from census, as well as engineering firms that have did high desk, or desktop designs, Google Authenticery, things like that. 2% multi-dwelling units and 11% commercial. It would be a total of 28 miles of fiber within Alva. 12 miles of that would be underground. On your map, green underground, blue sky is your aerial portion. So we'll have 26 miles up in the air on poles, and 12 miles underground. That would be phase one. And I say that because we continue to edge out. First phase of Perry didn't get I-35. Second phase of Perry went out to I-35 around, you know, the north and south exits of Perry on I-35. That was kind of phase two in years two and three. And same way with Tonkawal. We actually, phase one of Tonkawal stopped right there at the north side of town on, what's that? How are we going into Ponca? 11, not 11, 60.
64.
Yeah. So stopped right there, and then we expanded out to the casino, casino and their new urgent care out west of town. So phase one here, as the city will grow, once this happens, and you won't even, it'll, you won't know it, it'll just happen. In Stillwater, multiple new subdivisions, Perry, new subdivisions. So the, like I said, the initial phases will look like this, and then we'll move forward after that. Next one, please? Again, just a little high-level design. Similar to that one, just a different picture, so no rotation. Next one, real quick? So communication, we, so if you think about this, most communities, even Alva, started center of town, expanded out with utilities, power, water, sewer, expanded. This is a complete overbuilt of a utility within your community. And so it's, we typically get the response, we've never done anything like this before. Because utilities not just come in and started completely from scratch, and that's what we'll do. And so, you know, there's a lot of milestones throughout that. We'll have construction kickoff meeting, Randy, I, Missy, maybe all of us, maybe a couple of us will be in town with our construction group, our engineering group. We'll work with Public Works on a weekly or every other week basis. Tell them, here's where we're at, here's where we're going, here's what we did yesterday, here's what we're going to do tomorrow. The constituents, 30 days out, they're starting to get mailers. Two weeks out, you get another postcard. And then you get to, you know, T-minus-15 door hangers, signs in the neighborhoods, signs on the doors. So really open and honest communication so that everyone knows what's going on. We'll work with city clerk, we'll work with police, fire. We got a call one time, I think it was in Yukon. We, our engineering firm was out doing surveying, taking pictures, and people were calling into the city, why is this truck taking pictures? And, you know, we let everyone know, when that phase starts for Alva, we'll make sure that the police and fire and everyone knows that, hey, we're going to have a crew in doing engineering work, constructability of the community. So real transparent on that. Next one? Rates for internet, and then, I mean, primarily, we're also a cable television operator. You can have Blue Peak TV, just like you can have Suddenlink TV, or Optima, or Dish Network, or DirecTV. We're a provider of video content. We have all, this side will be all your locals in the state of Oklahoma City, 4, 5, and 9, over on the east side of the state, they're out in Tulsa. And our packages from a video perspective range and vary, just like the internet packages have variations in the future. Okay? Next one, please? That's it. You know, I did want to bring up some soft points. And your friends down the street, 42 miles directly east of you, good buddy. Spent a lot of time in Blackwell growing up over there. And then a little bit south in Tonkawal. Reach out to them. What we have seen is that price structure that we will be offering into Alva, that's the same across all of our communities. Typically, I mean, you guys may have done it in the back of your heads already. Heck, that's a $50 a month, $75 a month savings over what I'm paying today. Perry is a community about the size of this, they've got about 2,800 rooftops, 1,300 subscribers. 1,300 subscribers times 100 bucks, let's just call it $100 a month in savings. It's about 130 grand circulating back throughout the community on a monthly basis. 1.2 million total per year. You see sales tax, you see fewer late payments on sewer and water and trash collection. You see, hey, I got a couple extra, I got 100 extra bucks a month. You see more restaurant sales, sales tax revenue. So the trickle-down, I don't think many communities realize it until it's, until it's done and you can start seeing those things. But I encourage you, and I can put any of you guys up with any of the other communities who have, just to see what this does, because it is a transformation of a municipality. And we're excited that you guys are considering allowing us to be a part of the community, the franchise itself. Mr. Cunningham is, we've traded red lines back and forth. 5% of all the revenue for video fees, that's an FCC mandate, goes into the city for the franchise fee that we'll be paying back to the city. What we see is a lot of folks move off of a DirecTV and a Dish, simply because those aren't in public right-of-way, those are on private property, and the city doesn't collect sales or franchise fees on any of that, because it's, they're not in the public right-of-way. It's on antenna on someone's roof. But we also know that in storms in Oklahoma, those go out. And so folks seem to be moving to a more, you know, fiber-based, IP-based television service so that they don't lose signal during the storms. So, any questions for me, or Randy, or Missy? I will say that we were really impressed with you guys' council meeting. We go to a lot in many states, and it was probably the one of the most efficient ones that we've seen. Kudos to you all.
Do you subcontract out, or do you guys have your own crews that's going to come?
So the construction piece, we do have national firms that run that for us. Now, they'll have subs, so Mears, and then two others, Tac. There'll be two or three construction firms that we use all across the nation, and they'll have subcontractors to come in and do any underground, any underground work or aerial work.
Is this be like a couple-month type of job?
No, this will be, I would bet, start to finish, you're talking 12 to 18 months, and Alva will be done. We want to start after this franchise, after the vote, and you guys' consideration, that really kicks, starts the clock on our end. As soon as we're done, whatever the outcome is, we'll either reach out to our vice president of engineering, who's down in Flowermount, Texas. She'll kick off work with the engineering groups. They will likely be around in 60, 90 days. They'll start doing surveys, they'll start getting permits ready. We'll have a meeting with Public Works, how do they want those permits? What do they want on the prints, you know, stamped? Each municipality is different. Perry, they said, X Stoops, we know where you live, if we got a problem, we'll come find you. Stillwater is like, I've got a little bit more, you know, detail. So, just depends, so we'll work with the community on that.
Do you have like an office in town?
No.
You could walk up and pay their bills?
No, no, sir.
What's customer service like?
So our, we do have a storefront in Stillwater, and our technicians are all throughout. They're in the north central part of Oklahoma. We have a large warehouse in Stillwater on the west side of town. And that's where all of the equipment is. And so the technicians are there in the mornings, or the day before, and they'll have their trucks loaded for their schedule of installs, disconnects, et cetera. The, we're primarily credit card, auto pay, you know, that, so.
If I call?
Yeah.
Call the Stillwater office?
No, you're calling Sioux Falls, our call, I'm sorry. Sioux Falls is our call center for trouble tickets, repairs, installs, things like that. No offshore. So.
Will there be somebody, a technician based in town, once it's all?
I'm going to bet with the distance from Enid, they're going to be here, or anybody needed. I'm going to bet that there will probably be a need for one.
We have an Optimum one in town, I know.
Yep.
Doesn't support a lot of companies here.
Yep.
It's nice having somebody already here.
Sure. Familiarity, I mean, we see that a lot in our other markets, where you get a couple of guys in Stillwater that handle the Stillwater market. The guy that handles Blackwell and Tonkawal, he lives in Tonkawal, so, yeah. It is non-exclusive, so it doesn't mean that the provider can't come in and get the same consideration from us. It does, I believe, it does include for the city of Alva, relocations with service.
Up to two years. Up to two years.
Up to two years. And so we'll, if we move forward with this, we'll get to choose three of our, I mean, Steve and his staff, we're going to get to choose three locations to get free service to. Anything from your standpoint, Drew?
No.
I mean, I've looked at theirs, and looked at Optimum's previously. The actual agreements are fairly similar, I think they seem to be kind of standard.
Yeah.
So, but it did have the language for this one, having three buildings, but service.
Andy, it's like I said, not, not, it's just going to stop anybody else from going.
Your rates, your, I mean, like you said, like Optimum right now, paying $100, over $100 a month for one gig, and it's been slowly going up, like $25 every year. Your rate's locked in at 50 bucks, or what?
I think there is a way to lock it in. Like a five-year period? Yeah, I think that's what it is. I don't, I don't.
Yeah, three to five.
Yeah, three to five.
There's a path, there is a, an option to lock in. I think you have to auto pay, you know, you gotta set it up on auto pay, and then I think that it locks it in for a period of time.
I, you know, thank you, all of you for coming up and for taking the time prior to meet with us and kind of give us the lowdown before we brought it to council, but I know that fiber is a gap in our community, and it, it does hinder development, and, you know, it's been something that I've hoped to have had a good solution to for quite some time, to be able to get that in our community. It doesn't cost us a thing, and that actually, you know, benefit the municipality as much as, at the same time as it benefits the residents and business owners, so.
Basically, for the city, they get to use our right-of-ways, that's, that's what we're giving up.
All right. Anything else before we move to the action item? All right. Item twelve, discussion and action to approve City of Alva ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh oh five, ordinance of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, granting a non-exclusive permit to Clarity Telcom LLC to be a Blue Peak for the construction and operation of a cable system.
Motion to approve item twelve, stated in the agenda.
Second. Motion from Dr. Lars, second from Mr. Hoffman, to approve item twelve, as stated in the agenda. Any further discussion? Please call vote.
Lahr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Krakenberg?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Looking forward to it. Item thirteen, discussion and action to declare the nineteen ninety-six Stewart Stevenson fire truck, VIN number, a little VIN number, it isn't.
There's a military surplus, sorry.
A T three seven one four B C H E as surplus. We do have a local fire, or rural fire department, wants to use its parts, so maybe they've already started using its parts.
Is that county?
It was an old Ford truck, I believe.
No, but was it, I thought this was a county truck, in the city of, or, city of?
County, we, we, it's ours, the county acquired it for us, just like they acquired for other departments.
Have you ever seen another heavy truck?
No.
They're going down all over the parks. They're bad, they're terrible.
I didn't hear any motion.
Motion to approve item thirteen, as stated in the agenda.
Second. A motion from Dr. Lars, second from Mr. Krakenberg, to declare the nineteen ninety-six Stewart Stevenson fire truck as surplus. Any further discussion? Please call vote.
Lahr?
Yes.
Krakenberg?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
All right. Item sixteen, discussion and action in the executive session pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven V two, to discuss FY twenty-five twenty-six, City of Alva and I F F local thirty-seven eighty-two negotiations. Is there a motion?
So moved. Sorry.
That was your second?
I'm excited for all of them.
I have a motion from Mr. Adair, second from Dr. Lahr, to enter the executive session for item number sixteen. Is there any further discussion? Please call vote.
Adair?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Krakenberg?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
All right. Item, discussion and action approving the twenty-five twenty-six City of Alva and I F F local thirty-seven eighty-two contract. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-five twenty-six City of Alva and I A F F local thirty-seven eighty-two contract. I have a motion for Mr. Bowman, second for Mr. Hoffman, to approve the twenty-five twenty-six City of Alva and I F F local thirty-seven eighty-two contract. Is there any further discussion? Please call vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Krakenberg?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
We do not have anything that qualifies as new business. Item nineteen, remarks made by council members, we will be having a special meeting, so stay tuned. There's a tight timeframe for being able to have the benefit of the, of a temporary zoning permit for open containers, in order to be able to have that in place by the time the car show happens. So, Drew is, that's all he's working on this week, he's not gonna do anything but that.
Exactly.
And so.
He wants to build a drink, those bigger cars.
Yeah, it's one of those, people are gonna do it anyway, that as well. Take care of it, it is not a license to be drunk in public, but anyways, I know that's coming up, and so stay tuned for that.
The other thing is, I, there's the Girl Scouts in the hut down in the park, they just got me some stuff today, so I told them we could be able to put that on a special meeting.
Okay.
It has to do with ownership of the hut down there.
It's not related to voting, I think.
And I just wanna also, one more remark, but we're, we're doing some stuff, guys, gals. The Eli Young Band is, is drawing a lot of attention from our friends in other cities in the area, much larger than ours. They still know how we can do it, and they can't, and so, you see any of these events that are going on with either Beer Co. or Nightlight, or whoever decides to put on the next one, do what you can to support the events, encourage others to do the same. We, we got lumped into a, a comment that says, "Well, if Alva's doing all that, maybe we should just watch Alva in Tulsa and Oklahoma City and Alva to see what they're doing." So, we're, got some good people doing some good things in Alva, so. Anything else? City Council is adjourned, we'll call to order the regular Alva Utility Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lahr?
Here.
Krakenberg?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Ferris?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Item three, discussion and action on the consent agenda, all of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature and normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, it will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of a consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting in July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Item B, approval of the minutes of special meeting, FY twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. And item C, approval of claims in the amount of one hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred five dollars and seven cents, payroll expenses of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hoffman, second by Dr. Lahr, to approve the consent agenda, is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Krakenberg?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Item, that's it. We don't have anything that qualifies as new business. Item six is adjourned. We will call to order the regular Alva Economic Development Authority meeting. When you're ready, please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lahr?
Here.
Krakenberg?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Ferris?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Item three, discussion and action on the consent agenda, all of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature and normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, it will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of a consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting in July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, and approval of claims in the amount of three hundred seventy-two thousand, twenty-one dollars and four cents, and payroll expenses of forty-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollars and forty-two cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hoffman, second by Dr. Lahr, to approve the consent agenda, is there any further discussion? Please call vote.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Krakenberg?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Item five, discussion and action to accept the Parks and Recreation Board recommendation to select Musco to install LED lights, the northwest softball field at the Alva Recreation Complex, at a cost of one hundred forty-three thousand dollars. We do have a one hundred thousand dollar LED lighting grant, that's gonna cover the majority of those expenses, ADA will cover the remainder, and they had some donated funds that will actually cover that remainder. Enter any motion.
I want, I have some questions. See, they picked that field because it has the worst lights?
Has most of them that are out.
So, how long does that field use?
The field the Northwestern uses, are those LEDs? No. Can those lights be moved to the homes? And we put that on a, those nice lights on the field that are gonna get used all the time? I mean, it's used quite a bit as well, we have terminals and stuff, they're all perfectly used.
I was thinking the same thing, if we had to choose which one to do first, I think it's more Northwestern's, you know, that's the best, but.
I, if we move to Northwestern, it won't be any more expensive, I can tell you that much.
I'm just curious about it.
We could move it, yeah, that's fine.
But it's, we're all, we're all a little bit in time, Craig.
We are.
Um, to get board action, and then back again, board action, I don't know, but I know that they discussed this with the director and the board out there, and that's what they landed on.
And this is the larger one, where the, the middle school plays their ballgames as well.
And then the lights that are working will be moved to areas where lights are not working.
Yeah, we'll have a stash of lights that are still working, we can use to replace ones that are burnt out. Now, that'll cost us a little more money in the future, but we can do that.
And they're applying for this grant again.
Yeah, very true.
Any other discussion? I do have a question. If not on this project at the wreck park, are there other places within the city where a hundred thousand dollars could go to LED conversions? Let's go, how's it whisper though?
Not really, we've already updated all of our buildings, so the only place you can think of would be the, the park, and that's, I mean, the pools already have been used, the parks not, and it's not a hundred thousand dollars if the lights are out. I said, we've already updated all of our city buildings, so they're, they're updated. We forgot the previous grants.
This is a grant for lights.
Yes, certainly for LEDs.
You're saying for?
No, it, it.
It has to leave for?
LED upgrades.
Okay.
Has to be just for that.
Um, it is, we've, we've received this grant two or three years now.
Third year, this is the biggest one, though.
This is the third year, this is the biggest one, we will apply for it again, if we don't use the money this year, the chances of getting the money next year are less.
I think we'll definitely use the money. Hey, well, the discussion was hashed around about what field, was it strictly based on the idea that that field has the worst lighting?
That's the majority of it.
Had most of, has most lights out.
Okay, but then the idea of moving lights around to provide light for that field that maybe showcase the most complete field, did that come up at all?
Not really.
I talked to a couple of board members, I, I don't think the ones that I talked to, they were concerned about losing the grant, and not, you know, getting any upgrade out of it, but I don't know that I gathered they were strongly opinionated on where.
Where, right.
Well, this is the grant that's specific, or can we just approve this, and then we can have those conversations with the board?
We can approve for the lights.
Board can have that conversation.
Send it back to have them really evaluate.
But I've already got the invoice for Musco for the hundred thousand, so we can get that sent in and get that money on its way, regardless of what field we do out there. So, for example, Northwestern softball field has, actually, I think, a few fewer lights, so it won't be a total of forty-three thousand dollar difference, it'll be less. So, I think, if I'm wrong, if we approve this, I mean, leave the Northwest softball field off there, just approve that, and that's the maximum we have, and if it comes in under, comes out.
Get all the LED lights we can get.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm okay with that conversation, I just gotta get that invoice in.
'Cause that's just the board's recommendation.
Yeah.
Council has the ultimate decision.
Wow, that'd be my fault, too, get as many lights as you can, and replace as many with LED lights.
But of all of them that you can here, and if you got a couple left over, go back.
Yeah, the problem with that is, you got, it's, then it becomes a control issue, if you don't move the entire field.
Well, if we get a hundred thousand, it only takes forty thousand per field, couldn't we do it with two?
It's, it's gonna take, it'll take at least a hundred, a hundred, for like the Northwestern field, I'll bet, just guessing, probably a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and thirty-eight. So, it's still gonna be well over a hundred thousand dollars, but it's just.
Well, and any remainder that we have, if it's donated money, can, that can roll over to the next lighting, or whatever else maybe.
We're gonna use Musco, just buy another pile of lights, and we'll use that next year if we use some of the new lights.
We'll see how much we have left over.
I'll say, I don't know that they're, I think with the donated funds, it's whatever the difference is in this project, so I don't think the donated funds are intended to be.
So, it wasn't right at forty-three thousand, just somebody's gonna cover the difference?
Yeah, they'll cover the difference, so it, it's not that there'll be forty-three thousand dollars if the project is only a hundred and thirty-five.
If you guys want to move Northwestern, just try, just leave the Northwest softball field off there, maybe add in, I think that's field one, isn't it? I think Northwestern, this is field four.
I would not specify.
I was just gonna say, just approve the LED lights along for at the recreational complex.
There you go.
Then they can use them however they need.
We'll let the board make that decision?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the Parks and Recreation Board recommendation to select Musco to install LED lights at the Alva Recreational Complex at a cost of one hundred forty-two thousand dollars.
Second. I have a motion from Dr. Lars, second from Mr. Bowman, to accept the Parks and Recreation Board recommendation to select Musco to install LED lights at the Alva Recreation Complex, at a cost not to exceed a hundred forty-three thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion? Please call vote.
Lahr?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Adair?